From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard. Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, August 9, 2022, 2:00 PM meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll first hear from County Council Marco Razan on a report on actions taken in closed session.
Good afternoon, board members. Because item number 56 was withdrawn, your board met only on item 55, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. All right, next we'll consider the consent agenda. Agendas are located on the tables by the doors in the rear of the chambers, if you'd like to follow along. All items listed with a CA above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. So I'll read the consent agenda items now. Starting on page two of our agenda, item three is on consent. On page three, all items five through nine are on consent. On page four, all items 10 through 18 are on consent. Page five, all items 19 through 25 are on consent. Page six, all items 26 through 31 are on consent. Page seven, all items 32 through 40 are on consent. And finally, on page eight, items 41 through 43 are all on consent. And so at this time, I'll ask if there's any members of the audience that would like to make any comments on the consent agenda items. Okay, I don't see any, then I'll return to the board for questions, comments, or a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion in second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Three ayes, two absents. Supervisor Maggard, Supervisor Perez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we'll return to page two of our agenda. Item number one is public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter not on this agenda but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the board at a later meeting. Also, the board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes, and please state your name before you make your presentation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Ralph Robles. I am a veteran. On April 3, 1969, I was providing ground-to-air communications to an air crew practicing clandestine night airdrops at Sembok Air Base in Germany. Their old WWII C-47 aircraft flew 50 feet off the ground, and one of their crew would throw sandbags out the doors, out the aircraft's door, to simulate bundles of ammunition. As one of those bundles came skidding at 100 miles an hour past me, not 10 feet away, I remember thinking that how easily I could get hurt if they missed their mark. Late into the night, the aircraft commander called me to say that the portion of their training for me was over, and that I could go home. As I drove my communications vehicle away, the crew went on to practice simulated assault strip landings and takeoffs. The next morning, I learned that the aircraft had crashed. From 1,000 feet, the rudder broke off and wedged in the elevator, the left elevator, and the aircraft went into a dive. In the split seconds, the air crew managed to bring the props to a standstill, shut off their fuel, and cut off all electrical systems. Thankfully, no one on the ground was hurt, no fires. The propellers had come to a complete stop by the time the aircraft crashed. Those heroes, Major Paul Jones, Captain Randolph Kramer, and Staff Sergeant Donald J. Bissell, were practicing the arts of war so that we could practice the arts of self-governance. One of those arts is openness. Democracy dies in darkness. We have a gee-whiz Buck Rogers ballot counting system that provides many opportunities for manipulation and little accountability. But today's generations have frog-leaped you, and they know that the digital curtain can no longer hide the man behind them. The only way to ensure that this system is not compromised is to revert back to paper ballots and distributed counting by decentralizing the count system. This way, you will actually improve the system and make it more reliable, and also quicker.
Mr. Robles, your time has expired. You're about a minute over. If you could please bring your comments to a close. We appreciate your comments today.
Well, I just want to urge you again to reconsider a forensic audit of our last election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Couch.
Before you leave, Mr. Robles, would you mind going up to the fifth floor and checking in at my office with a young man named Jesus and see if you can get on the calendar?
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers this afternoon? Okay, seeing none then. I'll move on to board member announcements and reports. Do we have anything from our board? Okay, seeing none then. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is an item under the Planning and Natural Resources Department, item number four. This is a proposed request for Pioneer Partners 2000 LLC to designate the Mojave Inland Port to support goods movement from the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach. And I'll turn to Laura Lioviet, our Director of said department. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Chairman Scrivner, members of the board, this is an economic development matter, which I have coordinated with the CAO. It's a request from Pioneer Partners 2000 LLC, who are here today, of an approved site plan for Drayage to designate the site of the Mojave Inland Port. And if we could have the map put up on the overhead. So this is a 410 acres of M2 medium industrial and M3 heavy industrially zoned property. It is at the southeast corner of State Highway 14 and 58. You can see that this, if you've been on that road, with many of you have, this is a primarily open area. There is actually nothing there. There is a chemical plant next door, but the most important part of this is the Union Pacific Railroad that bisects this site. This is an underutilized area, and the proposal today is for your board, by resolution, to designate this particular site, the Mojave Inland Port. The state of California's 2022-23 state budget included $1.2 billion for a one-time port and freight infrastructure program to help ease supply chain congestion and increase the capacity to move goods in California. The supply chain congestion and space limitations, you're very well aware of. They started in the pandemic, but they are only increasing as people buy stuff online. The ports of LA and Long Beach, this congestion is a function of the highly urbanized area that they're in. This is part of our platform that your CAO has brought to your board and that the Planning Department is supporting, which is to diversify our economic base, to find projects that fit with the direction that we are going. It provides jobs. It will provide a new opportunity for using the area. And I would like to point out that in your board packet is a copy of a letter of support from the Mojave Air and Space Port, which is adjacent to this project, and that, for us, was one of the most important issues, was how does this fit with the aerospace future that they have? We have provided you with a copy of the PowerPoint, and the applicant is here and would like to make a presentation. That completes my presentation, unless you have any questions.
Do we have any questions for Director Oviet, before we hear the presentation? All right. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. I don't have anything else to say after that pitch. Anyway, so, Chairman and members of the board, I'm Morgan Hill. I live at 5010 Woodway Drive in Houston, Texas, and I appreciate this opportunity to share our vision for the Mojave Inland Port. The opportunity for an inland port in Mojave is driven by congestion in San Pedro Bay, as you know, and it's predicted it worse. The ports of Long Beach and LA currently process about 20 million TEUs a year. That number is expected to move to 34 million by the end of the decade. And the biggest problem is item number four. They're out of land. Well, we can help. What if we were able to imagine ourselves as a branch of the ports of LA and Long Beach? Then the process would be pretty simple. Loaded container ships would come in to the berths at LA and Long Beach, offload canisters on two shuttle trains, which would push these canisters 90 miles up the track to Mojave, where tractor-trailers would be waiting for them, immediately offload them onto the tractor-trailers for their final destination. Pretty simple solution. We believe that going through that drill, we can process 2.6 million TEUs per year, which represents about 10% of what the ports do. That'll move the meter. The other thing is that your governor came up with the same idea, and he issued Executive Order 1921, in which he said, among other things, he asked, "Department has in the state, do you have any excess property that could be used for offloading canisters?" And the answer was, they found 14 acres in one location. We think it was a public park. Well, we can trump your 14 acres. This is us. The red stuff is where we are. As the director said, we have over 400 acres there, but we have some adds on top of that that give it more value. First of all, it's at the intersection of two state highways, 14 and 58. As she mentioned, an underutilized, heavy gauge branch line of the Union Pacific runs right through the middle of it. And then, just over our fence, is the Mojave Air and Space Port, 24/7, with a 12,500-foot runway that can handle any plane that operates today. By the way, LAX does not have a runway that long. So, we can say, when it comes to moving goods, we have four options: rubber tire, rail, air, and space. Not many people can say that. This is a list of many of the stakeholders who will be happy when we do our project. The first one you got to look at is kind of item number two, the BCOs. These are the beneficial cargo owners, and the BCOs pay for everything. So that's the first group you want to get happy. By the way, we think we have just identified what may become our first BCO, which is exciting to us. We actually may make money on this project. It could happen. But if the BCOs are happy, then the ocean shippers are happy, and the railroads are happy. And when we prove that we can support 3,000 high-paying jobs, then if you're unemployed, or underemployed, or a member of a labor union, you're probably going to get happy also. And if your single objective is clean air, then you'll be pleased with our project, because our approach is more environmentally friendly than other options. And we expect to add, bottom line there, $73 million to Kern County. Those are taxes, and so when we do that, we think some of the people in this room will get happy. Little bit about us. Pioneer Partners is a Nevada entity. We are headquartered in Texas. I hope you won't hold that against us. We're experienced in a lot of areas internationally and nationally: industrial, manufacturing, chemical, large-scale land development. As our name implies, we have owned this property for 22 years. It's been in the family for nine years beyond that. We own the property free and clear, and we have the ability and the experience to raise all the capital necessary for this project. So this is not a financial ask. We did a couple of other things to kind of prove up the value of the process and its validity, and what we did is we brought in some consultants. And the first thing that we did is we looked at the environmental impact, and we asked them to use just data from the California Air Resources Board, CARB, knowing that if they use just that data, then nobody would challenge the input. Their conclusion was, after looking at this data, that a two-mile train will pollute less than 400 tractor-trailers. It's almost intuitive, I think. The other thing we did, we brought in a firm called Beacon Economics, and we said, "What is the impact on this project?" And we were, I will tell you, very pleased with their results. They said, "Once you are up and running, this project will have an annual economic impact in excess of a half-billion dollars." Two important words I just used. First of all, the B-word, that we don't get used a lot, and secondly, annual. We expect this project to support 3,000 well-paying jobs that will have an annual labor income of $226 million. We expect that Kern County will get a $73 million bonus in taxes, and we expect $100 million to go to the Alameda Corridor. As we speak, our website is going live, MojaveInlandPort.com. I encourage you to visit that. There will be supporting data on all the stories I just made up today. There's an FAQ portion of it, and there's an opportunity for input and response, for you to ask questions and give us some feedback. And with that, I have only one more thing I want to say, and that is, if you have been doing all your professional work in Kern County, you probably think that the Kern County Planning Department is your typical planning department. And if you made that assumption... planning department. And if you made that assumption, you would be dead wrong. Your Kern County Planning Department is exceptional. When we started working with them, we kept saying, "Did they give us the wrong phone number? This does not sound like a planning department to us. This sounds like the Kern County Economic Development Department or the Kern County Public Relations Department." We have worked in other countries, in other states, in other cities, and the typical experience you have with a planning department is their favorite word is "no." Can we do that? "No." What if we... "No." Okay, here's a new idea. "Nope." What your planning department did, and I need to tell you that Kern County has myriad development guidelines, and they're complicated and strict, and we like that. We like that. That raises the bar so that all development winds up better. And your planning department took us by the hand and walked us through the process and said, "Here's what you need to do. Provide these three things. That'll meet that guideline. Do this one. Get this there." So anyway, kudos to the planning department, and you guys are lucky to have them. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Do we have any other speakers on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board. This is in my district, and I'm excited to have this project in my district. I see this as a win-win across the board, from businesses to consumers and anyone else who relies on the timely delivery of even the most ordinary household goods that we all generally take for granted, except when we're not able to get them. So this development isn't just about the movement of goods. It's about the promise of opportunity, I think, for the folks in Kern County. Once up and running, as has been said, this port will support about 3,000 well-paying jobs. And goodness knows that we need more economic diversification with the pressures that we have, the negative pressures that we have from Sacramento coming down against our two leading industries, oil and agriculture. So when we get a project that is going to pay people well and increase our jobs base and then consequently our tax base, we definitely are receptive to it and want to support it when it makes sense. And this one does make sense. So we're looking at the equivalent of approximately $225 million in payroll and over $70 million in tax revenues that can be used to reinvest in our community. So I am wholeheartedly in support of this, and I'll look to my colleagues to make a motion.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Three ayes, two absents. Supervisor Maggard, Supervisor Perez.
Congratulations, and thank you for your investment in our county. We appreciate it. That brings us to the conclusion of our meeting for this afternoon, and our next meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be on August 23. We are dark on August 26, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to August 23. We are adjourned.